Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Joseph Camara, Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Long.
Yep.
Pelletier.
Here.
Bavaris.
Here.
And Vice President LaLavi LeBeau.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. A motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item one, auto repair shop licenses, Anton David Vargas, 157 Rice Ave, Somerset. DBA ADV license to operate an auto repair shop at 681 Wright Avenue on Lot F, 7-12. Are there any proponents to this proposal? Any proponents? Yes, come down to the table, sir. You just have a seat facing the council and, nope.
On the other side.
There you go. Your name and address for the record, please.
Anton David Vargas, 157 Rice Ave, Somerset Ave.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Motion made to waive the rules by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Sir, if you'd just pull the microphone a little closer to you.
Microphone, just put it a little closer to you. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Oh, I want to reapply for it. I had an auto repair license on this property since 1967. I transferred it over to a different person that was renting off me. And this time last year, he was renewing it. And he went through the fire department, all right, and police department got it. And I guess he had a traffic violation against him, so he turned it down. Didn't renew it, didn't renew the license. I didn't find out until June of this year. So I have to re, I'm reapplying for my license on the property so I can rent it. And I actually want to sell it, sell the property. But my persons got it up for realtor, said it'd be, I'd be better off if I had another license on, active license on the property. So I'm reapplying for it.
Thank you. Okay.
So all you want is to get it back in your name?
Yes, get the auto repair license back in my name on the property.
And then you lease it out or sell it, is that it?
Rent it out or sell it, yes.
Look, would he have to come, if he sold it or leased it, whoever takes it would have to come back the license to it?
The operator of the, it would have to be transferred to the operator.
Yeah. All right, I don't see no, no problem with that, you know. You had it for a long time and.
Oh, it's 67.
We'd like to help you out and whatever I can do. And my colleagues will probably do the same thing, so with that, I yield.
I, I'll support this. I'm just wondering, does it, when we activate a license, this is basically going to be dormant until he rents it, sells it, or whatever, correct? It's not operating right now?
Right, I'm not operating.
Is there, is there any ordinance in there or anything like that to say, if we approve it, he renews it, pays the deal, and then all of a sudden, you know, 30 days or 60 days from now, he hasn't moved the property, does it die? I'm asking the clerk.
You issue the license, Counsel, it's valid for two years, but there is an ordinance that requires that the business operate.
And what's the ordinance say on that? Operate for what?
We have had licenses revoked at the request of the police department for non-operation of the license.
So that's, that somebody would have to apply for the revocation? Okay, I'm good. The yield.
Do, do, do you have that straight?
Oh, not really.
Well, I guess the way we're speaking is, if you were to apply for it and.
Whoever buys it or rents the property, they have to reply.
If you put it in your name and you don't run it, that's no good?
No, it'd be good unless somebody, unless somebody made a challenge to it and said, "It's not operational, we want to cancel it," then.
Yeah.
You might be in trouble with that. But as long as nobody, nobody complains, you're not in a problem, so.
You got it.
There's no objection here.
Madam Clerk, that's correct.
Which part?
Not that last part. He can have it, but unless somebody complains and puts in a request to revoke it, it will be good for two years.
Well, the ordinance does require that.
That it operates.
The business operate. So.
No complaint.
You're going to work on a few cars right in between?
You issue the license, it's valid for two years.
You're going to have to change your oil every now and then, right?
Counselors six and seven.
Stop them and say hello and change your oil, it'll be all set.
Counselor seven, you yield?
I yield.
Counselor six, you yield?
Yes.
Counselor three.
Mr. Vargas, just so you, you're clear. If this goes through tonight, which it probably will.
Yes.
What the clerk is suggesting is that if you don't have an active operating business there, the police could come and say, "You don't have an active business, we're going to revoke your license." And then it would come back. So it's to your benefit to either activate it and work in the business yourself, or very quickly get it transferred to somebody else who's going to operate it. Because if it stays vacant and not operating, you're putting your license in jeopardy of being revoked.
Okay.
So that's, you should, you should.
I'll change some oil, oh my gosh.
Yeah, you either should do something quick and get active, or else quickly get another person to get in there and rent it or buy it and let that person operate it. So don't let it remain dormant very long.
All right, because it could be canceled, I understand.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any opponents? Calling any proponents?
Will the hearing be closed?
Tag it.
Madam Clerk, do you want to, did you say "all" and "closed" at the end? Those are the instructions I got at the beginning of the meeting.
Close each, close each one. I'm sorry.
The revocation for the storage of the flammable is, we have them. Get prepared as one order, so you can open that up and hear all four.
We're going to close.
We're going to close the first one.
Motion to close was made by Counsel Stephen Camara, my second, seconded by Counsel Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
You want to adopt that one now, or you want to?
Move the opening of the revocation of storage of flammable permits.
Second.
Oh, that'll be, that'll go to.
Motion made to open by Counsel Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. These are all on one order. Duro Industries, Care of Chase Street, Inc., 124 Washington Tree, Washington Street, Suite 101 Foxborough, to store 30,000 gallon number six fuel oil and 13,000 gallons and 55 gallon drums of coating material above ground at 110 Chase Street. Duro Industries, Care of Chase Street, Inc., 124 Washington Street, Suite 101 Foxborough, to store 30 gallons of number six fuel oil above ground at 1 Middle Street. Dural Textile Printers LLC, Care of Chase Street, 124 Washington Street, Suite 101 Foxborough, to store 30,000 gallons of number six fuel oil above ground at 206 Globe Mills Avenue. And Raul Villadaria, Trustee, RJB Realty Trust, A2 Colonial Drive, Unit 8, Andover, to maintain a gasoline station to store 20,000 gallons underground at 1708 South Main Street. Madam Clerk, you have an update?
Yes. The location at 1708 South Main Street, the business owner has come into the office last week and did pay the outstanding amount. So if we can just withdraw that particular one from the order, they do wish to keep this license active.
So moved.
Do we need to do that now in full counsel?
In full counsel.
Thank you. Do we have any proponents? Any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, motion to close the hearing, ask any counselors.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. A motion to open the third public hearing?
Second.
Motion open made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Stephen Camara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three, Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc., for jointly owned pole location, pole relocation for the following. Relocate existing jointly owned pole 6-1 approximately 30 feet north of its current position. This pole relocation will service a new sewer pump building while keeping the existing building running in accordance with Plan Number 28921895 dated 10/23/219. Are there any proponents? Any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none? Motion to close?
Motion is closed.
Motion to close made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Long. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. A motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Joseph Camara. Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Long.
Yep.
Pelletier.
Here.
Bavaris.
Here.
And Vice President LaLavi LeBeau.
Here. Counsel Joseph Camara did call earlier. He's on a work trip and his return was delayed this afternoon, so he's not going to be with us this evening. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have two people signed up for citizens' input. Grace McDonald-Nay, 73 Commonwealth. The subject is Northeast Alternatives. And Dennis Duquette, 33 Commonwealth Avenue. Subject is Northeast Alternatives, and I believe they're going to be speaking together. If you would each give your name and address for the records, please.
Grace McDonald-Nay, 73 Commonwealth Ave, Fall River, Massachusetts.
Dennis Duquette, 33 Commonwealth Ave, Fall River, Massachusetts.
And you each have three minutes.
We've been attending quite a few traffic meetings this year, and we've been to about four or five. And they were fruitful to some degree, where we were having 18-wheelers turn around in our cul-de-sac for Northeast Alternative, which is the marijuana distribution center there, as well as not being able to get in and out of the end of our street, concerns for public safety based on the fact that during certain, certain hours, there are sometimes no way to get in and out of the street. Traffic study, as we got more information, we learned that the traffic study was never done. It was based on the liquor store that was originally there, and we're talking night and day here. We have families, we have noise that's happening. There are two houses that abut that property have three school-aged children, each of them, and I have recordings of noise that happens all night long. Humming noise, hissing noise, loud noises, 6 o'clock in the morning, I've been woken up, I'm across the street from there. We've been taking video of these noises and they're constant. You can't open your windows in the summertime because of the smell. This is, this is how it got, how this facility got deemed a retail property is well beyond me, because if you look at the percentage of that property that's being used for retail versus to grow marijuana and manufacture edibles, then you're going to look at a big difference between the retail space and what's happening in the building. We're looking to the city of Fall River to start to back the citizens of Commonwealth Ave and Heritage Court. We need help. We have elements in our neighborhoods. There was a gun pulled on someone, one of our neighbors got involved in it, the police were not involved. We spoke to the police at the traffic and they had resolved it, but then didn't call because it had dissipated. That was a line dispute. During holidays, it is unbelievable. We have people skateboarding up and down the street. We have RVs parked in house, in front of houses with children from California, New York, Missouri, you name it, all over the country. This is a cul-de-sac. I'd like to ask all of you right now, why do you live in a cul-de-sac? Because you want privacy. And that's certainly not happening on Commonwealth Ave and Heritage Court. Tonight, I did bring a list of our complaints, and we did do, we have submitted this previously to the traffic committee. We do have a signed petition from all the residents. We also have a list of complaints and public safety issues with us tonight. I'd like to submit them. We are going to rewrite the petition because it's mainly traffic. One of the concessions we were looking for was to have Northeast Alternative have to transport from another location and keep control of the element and the amount of the element that's in our neighborhood. That's on this petition as a request. We're planning on rewriting this and re-signing with all the safety, public safety issues we have as well. For us, we're novices at this. Based on what's happening in the neighborhood, we have odor issues, noise issues, traffic issues, and safety issues when it comes to children playing in the street. They can't play outside. People smoking pot before they're leaving the facility, you can see them. Okay, I thought you had a question. You can see them using product before they leave. The children that abut that, that facility, they, they were smoking outside. We were told by their security they were going to make sure that doesn't happen going forward. You have kids asking their parents, "What is that?" So we're looking to you for advice as to how to go from here and support as taxpayers, plus our property values.
Pelletier?
The gentleman want to talk first before I ask questions? Do you want to talk now?
I, I believe Grace touched on just about every subject.
Okay.
It's difficult to explain the picture that we're dealing with there unless you really see it with your own eyes.
Yeah.
You know? Like, like Grace said, it's a cul-de-sac. It's not, it's not a city street, it's a side street, right? My cars have been hit in my own driveway numerous times.
Yeah.
Our mailboxes are always getting knocked over. Our mailboxes were getting blocked by the traffic that this place was bringing in. Our postal service people told us that they weren't going to deliver our mail anymore because they can't get to our mailboxes.
All right, well, I know it's a bad situation. You certainly know it's a bad situation. But what's the answers? How did, to the clerk, these guys open up from, what, 10 to 10? Is that what it is?
Weekdays and Saturdays is from 10 to 9, and Sundays is from noon to 9. Seven days a week.
How do they get to open up that shop within hours? They never had to come in front of us for anything. They just got permission from the state, "Here you go, open it up." And I go by there a lot, and I see the traffic, I see some of the, they hit the railings on the way in. I don't know why. I mean, I can guess why, but it's no good for that area. It's no good for you. And we've definitely got to step in somewhere, but how can we curtail this? Do we make an ordinance? I don't know if we can stop these guys. I think some of the problem is that you've got one recreational in the city. Everything's at a standstill now because of what on with the bribes and everything else. It doesn't do you any good. And, you know, I say no more than eight, but don't leave it at one. Spread them out throughout the city of Fall River, I don't care. Everything's going to you. You're on, you're on a state line, they're coming in. But like you said, they're coming in from New York, they're coming all over the place. And I don't really know how much pot they can buy. I don't think they can go there and buy 10 pounds, I don't know. But they certainly are coming in. And you guys, I know there's a problem, and I, I think we, you talk about transportation. That's a good idea, and they should. And once that parking lot is full, you know, let them bring them in from someplace else. Tivity maybe, somewhere. But you definitely need, need some relief. And I think whatever we can do, I don't know. We have a resolution in, I think the vice president's got one in about bringing up a meeting and, and trying to straighten out the problems that you have. But it's a big problem for you guys, it's a big problem for us as well. Because we don't know where we stand here in the city of Fall River. It's just crazy. They're going to give licenses, not give licenses? We don't know. But meanwhile, you're just sitting there and you can't do anything about it. Now, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, they shouldn't be acting up, I guess. This house is right next to you and that's it. That's crazy. And I think the noise ordinance is till 10 o'clock. But, you know, whatever I can do, through the resolution to try to help you people out, I said it before, and there's a problem there, and we should all do what we can to straighten that out. And it'd be nice if we can get the owners to come down and, and work with us. That's what they got to do. It's their business. They make a lot of money there. Let them bring the transportation somewhere and bring them in. So along that line, I will support, whatever I can support. If I could close them down tomorrow, I would, but not up to me. But if they act up, we should step on their toes. They shouldn't be outside smoking. They certainly shouldn't be outside congregating and talking. They certainly shouldn't be outside with guns. That's what it's all about. It's your neighborhood, let's get it back to you guys. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. As a point of information, I had spoke with Gina Hutchins, who also lives on Commonwealth Avenue. She couldn't be here this evening. She had indicated that Counsel Joseph Camara had gone out to meet with some of the neighbors. Unfortunately, he is on a work trip, but he might have additional information. We put this resolution in, I spoke with Colleen about originally sending it to regulations because of the hours. However, we don't have any say in regulations over the hours. So right now, it's going to the Committee on Public Safety. I don't know that that's going to address all of the issues that they have there, but we can have that conversation when it comes up in committee, in, on the agenda, in the full counsel. Counsel Kilby?
As Counsel Pelletier stated, Vice President LeBeau was nice enough to put a resolution in. I chair public safety, so I'll be happy as soon as possible to, to have a meeting. I did read that article in the paper with regard to Counsel Camara meeting with the company, and I think their quote was that we're working on some type of remedy. But just, just a random thought, it just seems like such an important issue that every council is concerned about. It might be, you know, I'll, I'll argue this later on when they, we discuss the resolution, but we have a Committee on Finance, which is all the members of the council can put input into, into, into that. But interestingly enough, we received a letter from a concerned citizen. Attorney Paul Machado, who is, does not reside in your neighborhood, going over a checklist of things that he thought should have been considered when license had been issued. You know, asking, "Please describe the factors that were considered in issuing, issuing these letters in our opposition. Was there a written checklist used in making these decisions? Is there a file containing the information considered for each applicant?" And it goes on and on. What was the impact going to be to a particular neighborhood? There's more points here. So obviously, I don't think these issues were addressed when the city was entertaining this license and how it's impacting your neighborhood. So those are my comments. I do chair public safety. I'm going to have a meeting as soon as I can. And, but if the councils will to have it go to finance, that might be a, a more effective means of remedying the situation for you. And, and maybe this is a very general question, but your road is a public, public street? It's not a private way?
It's, it's not a private way.
Okay.
It is a public road.
But it's, yeah, the impact is beyond probably your, your cul-de-sac, but I mean, it's,
it's beyond, so it's. They did, we did get signs, the traffic committee was able to put in, "It's a dead end," and they were also able to put up, "No, no trucks allowed." If you put a traffic camera there, the city of Fall River could make a lot of money. That's all I'm saying with all the, all the 18-wheels that's still going down the street. Additionally, there are a lot of work vehicles and work trucks going in there, like large trucks.
And, and we have no, I think Counsel Kadeem made this point a couple of meetings ago, we have no ordinance currently on the books, you know, dictating, I did see Congress dictating, you know, how these applications are vetted. And so again, it's, it's, it crosses through a number of our committees every on the council. But we're, we're, we're going to be working on a few, okay? I yield.
We did see an attorney, and the, the fees that were quoted to us were quite large based on the fact that this is all brand new, and it would be new litigation. Will the, will everyone on the street get an invitation to the public safety meeting via mail?
The clerk gets the usual procedure. So the abutters and the abutters of the abutters, usually, right? Colleen?
If you instruct the clerk to invite all of the residents?
Yeah. So we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Publicly post it on a website and, and you have a petition signed, so I'm sure you're communicating with your neighbors as well. So I think word of mouth will circulate kind of quick, so.
Yeah, we, we showed up several times, like in force for some of the traffic meetings where we thought a representative was going to come from Northeast Alternatives, and we were told once, they forgot. None of the owners have ever showed up. Dennis, you could speak to how you invited.
Yeah, I, I invited, I actually invited somebody from the Cannabis Commission, because they've been in contact with me as well. He did reach out to me the day of the meeting stating he was unable to make it, and he hoped that one of the owners would show. They did send a, one of the security guards there as a representative to the company, but I believe it was, it was either the fourth or the fifth meeting is when he finally showed. And from what we were told, he was, he was invited to all the meetings, but they only showed that one time.
We'll, we'll determine what, as a group, we'll determine what authority we have along with the new administration. But I, I did read also that Northeast Alternatives did get a recertification from the state. So that's, that's, that's what I did read, that they, they're allowed to continue. So, but, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kilby, to answer some of those questions, there was a resolution in which the administration, the Corporation Council did do. It gave us all of the correspondence surrounding the licenses that were approved, the letters that were sent out, and it's all in the city council room in the back. Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you, Madam President. I know it's going to sound like a broken record, but unfortunately, this is, all these concerns need to be addressed when the host community agreements are given out. If not, I don't believe the city council or the city has really any authority when it comes to this, because the license is issued by the state. But with that, I, I know we have a resolution that's before us in full counsel. So whichever committee that gets forwarded over to, Madam Clerk, could we just request from the Corporation Council to do some research and kind of tell us what jurisdiction the city council or the city has in terms of enforcement for any traffic quality-of-life complaints that residents may or may not have so that we can go into this, this meeting prepared to have these conversations? As I mentioned before, you know, when you start talking about the community host agreements, that's when you're supposed to start looking at safety plans, traffic plans, quality-of-life controls, which, quality-of-life issues, which, noise pollution, you know, smell, things of that nature. And that should all be built into the, to the agreements with some type of agreement and assurance that, you know, what is being stated is going to be followed through. So since the licenses are issued by the state, I don't know, they don't necessarily come back before us like liquor licenses do, where on an annual basis, we can kind of sit here as a council and then make a determination if they're not living up to their end of the bargain, then we won't issue the liquor license. So it's, we're really kind of in a position where we have no authority or jurisdiction. So I'd, I'd like to be able to see what we could do, and maybe the CCC has some new regulations that they might be proposing in terms of giving local communities a little bit more jurisdiction. I'm, I'm not sure if that's the case. I know that they were looking at some, some regulations and amendments to regulations, so that may be something. So if we could just have that researched before the next meeting. I yield. I yield.
I was gonna take six. Councilor?
No, I'm well aware of the, uh, traffic issue and that type of stuff. And I've seen it with my own eyes. Um, and I think everybody's aware of that. My question would be through the clerk. Has anybody done any research on this through, uh, zoning? They went from retail and now they're manufacturing. Is that zone for manufacturing, that area? I'm just wondering, because I, from what I've learned is the liquor license basically was retail, and that license transferred to the marijuana business. I understand that. They can sell. It's a retail place. We could probably deal with the traffic in some way or some form. But there's more issues here. And from what I understand, they just put a big addition on the building. And that's for manufacturing. They are growing and doing all of that type of stuff at that site. So, my question, and I don't know what it is, but my question is, are they in compliance with our zoning bylaws? And I would, I would kinda bet that they're probably not. And I don't know how they end up there manufacturing, um, when all they have is a retail license. It's just a question. Um, if that's the case, then I would, I would issue a cease and desist and tell them to stop until we can get it all figured out. I'm sure they're a very responsible and reasonable people, but, uh, um, and this is what happens, is we've given these people basically a green light to operate, and they make this incredible, uh, monetary infusion. And all of a sudden, now, we have this big issue. It's, and it's not fair to anybody. Um, it really isn't. It's not fair to anybody. But the citizens here take, take priority, as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, I would like to, uh, be informed in the next week or so whether they are in compliance with our zoning. And if they are not, then we deal with them appropriately. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the council? Thank you.
I, I did speak with, um, City Planner Bill Roth. Um, I called him directly. And he basically told me, because we asked why we weren't notified, um, that they were coming to our neighborhood. The only notification we got was a sticker on our door when everything was said and done. And we went to a meeting, both Dennis and I, um, to learn about what this was. And it just explained what the whole marijuana industry was about. Uh, when I spoke to Bill Roth, he told me that because it was retail, and it was already zoned as retail, there was no need to let us know.
You have a good manufacturing.
I, I, I can see that. I know that. That's the percentage of the building that's, that's growing is, and manufacturing is much larger than the retail piece of it.
Oh, definitely. So, we'll definitely get an answer on that. But, uh, I'm sure going forward, this is all gonna have to be straightened out in some way. So, we'll, we'll figure it out, I guess, hopefully. I yield.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point. Could you be sure to leave your list with the clerk? So that she can distribute it to us? And, uh, just one other question. Um, you, you've obviously spoken to quite a few people. Have you been to the Building Inspector's Department? The Building Inspector is, oversees the zoning issues and whether or not there's a proper operation? Um, have you been in touch with the Building Inspector's Office?
No, we're, we're really new at this. So, we're figuring it out as we go.
Well, you went to the City Planner, which is good. On the same floor, I believe that they're on the same floor, is the Building Inspector.
The right next door.
His name is escaping me. Glenn, Glenn Hathaway is his name, Glenn Hathaway. So, I wonder if, uh, if we may, uh, through the chair, to the clerk, send a letter to Glenn Hathaway asking him to inspect the premises to determine if they are within the proper zoning for manufacturing of product? Because it seems like there's no question that it's a retail operation. So, I don't think that we're gonna be able to stop the retail process. But, uh, Mr. Hathaway can determine whether or not, uh, manufacturing falls within their, within the zoning. And if it doesn't fall within the zoning, then as was suggested by my colleague in Seat Six, that a cease and desist order could be rendered to stop any manufacturing. So, uh, could we send a clerk, uh, could we send a letter to Mr. Hathaway, Madam Clerk, on behalf of the council, requesting that he do an inspection and determine if there are any violations relating to zoning? With no objection, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further citizens' input? Item two is a resolution. The Administration to Abtain Bids and Present Plan to Install a Multi-Level Parking Garage. This was tabled from May fourteenth. The Administration can come down?
So, members of the council, um, this evening, we do have some information relative to the resolution. And, uh, but I thought it might be helpful to just advise you of a potential funding source that you may wanna consider. Um, a legislative delegation did manage to get a bond authorization included in, um, a bond at the state level for economic and infrastructure improvement. And it basically provides that, and I'm, I'm quoting from the legislation, "Provided that further that $1 million shall be expended for the planning, design, and construction of a parking garage on the waterfront in Fall River. And provided further that $2 million shall be expended for the planning, design, and construction of a parking garage in the downtown area of Fall River." Um, this process would require that we, um, complete the construction costs. It has to be submitted to, um, DCAM, the Division of Capital Asset Management. Um, for consideration, the funding would have to be, um, issued. Um, it's simply been included as authorized but not issued. And Senator Rodrick's has advised me that the city would have the option of using those funds for repair as opposed to new construction, if that was something that they wanted to consider. And so, when we're considering the Third Street garage area, um, we obviously have a garage that is in need of some substantial repairs. As you know, it has been partially closed due to the condition of that Third Street garage. Um, but again, the, the resolution, uh, does address the construction of an additional facility across the street in the flat surface area, and we do have information for that. I just wanted the council to be aware that there may be a state funding source to assist us in that effort, if that's what you so choose. I believe Mrs. Ferrera addressed the cost for, or do you have it?
Sure, certainly. Um, so, we have been looking into the flat surface garage. Uh, a primer care-like garage structure was the information that we set out to acquire the, the cost on. Um, it looks at this particular point that Primer Care paid, um, just shy of $2 million, um, based on some information we received from them. Um, we would be looking at potentially closer to $2.5 million when you look at, um, the increased value versus the time that Primer Care installed or erected their garage, as well as the fact that we need to pay the minimum housing, the federal guidelines for the, um, salary rates. So, we would be looking at about $2.5 million. If we were to, able to secure, um, the $2 million grant, um, for the construction of a garage, that would certainly make a lot more sense in the sense that we would be looking at approximately half a million dollar cost to the city. If we do not, are unable to secure that, then it is not feasible to put a, erect a garage on that particular lot. The lot would give us approximately 110 additional spaces over the 110 or so that we currently have. At $45 a month for rental space, um, assuming we rent every space, we'd be looking at about $64,000, $65,000, somewhere in that range in terms of additional local revenue, with a cost of $125,000 to $150,000 annually over 20 years to pay back that garage. So, clearly, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to erect a garage and be out of pocket costs, um, at this particular point. Um, with that said, I think, um, the administration, as well as this council, um, needs to go back and look further at the potential of, um, rebuilding and repairing the Third Street Garage. Um, Mr. Gallagher got some information today, um, or late today, um, with a cost of about $80,000 to do some repair to the next swing of spaces that go up into the garage. What that would do for us is it would free up approximately 46 spaces. Um, if we were then to, um, look at the plans that were done a number of years ago in terms of the evaluation from the engineering company to, um, repair all of that garage, um, looking at those numbers from back a couple of years back, um, we again are looking at somewhere around the $2 million range. Um, with that said, again, if we look at the, um, garage, um, possibility in terms of the transportation bond, um, we could use those monies for that as well. So, there's a lot of still open questions here. Um, a lot of it goes to what is the intent of this council? Where would you prefer to see us, um, expend our resources in terms of remodeling the Third Street Garage? Getting that back to where it was? Um, looking at the flat surface, trying to, um, secure this bonding opportunity? Um, and with that, being able to put up a structure that is similar to that structure that is at the Primer Care site? Um, or, and then a third option, although, um, we haven't, certainly haven't looked into it, into a lot of details, but working with maybe our energy, um, company in Maresco and potentially putting solar on the very top level of the Third Street Garage and what type of savings that we may be able to incur as a result of, uh, generating solar. So, there are a lot of still open items. Um, I think if, if it's the will of this council to go forward and apply for the, um, transportation monies in the bill, um, and, um, potentially be awarded that, um, the question would then be, you know, would we be able to better utilize that as a repair on a structure that is in disrepair as we currently sit here? Or does it make more sense at this particular time to, um, put up another structure across the street? There will be a few issues with that structure across the street if we do put it up. Um, there is a CSO project, um, that is underneath. Um, Mr. Gallagher could probably speak better to that particular structure. But, um, it looks like, based on the footprint, that we would be able to put up a unit that would house approximately 110 to 120 spaces.
Councilor in Seat Seven, Councilor Pelletier?
Uh, did you say $80,000 to repair the Third Street?
Only to go up to, to improve the number of spaces to about 46 additional spaces. So, to, Mr. Gallagher can speak to the repair, but it's not going all the way up to the top.
Why is it not going all the way to the top?
To do the entire garage, excuse me, to do the entire garage, it was the 1.3 to like 1.9 million dollars to repair the entire garage. Uh, the 1.9 was an optional of replacing panels, uh, on the roof. Um, some of the T-structures and that. If we opened up the entire garage to cars all the way to the roof line. If we decide to do, like, the solar panel idea, where we would maybe rubberize the roof, put an EPDM roof on it, and put solar panels on it, we would fix the lower structure, maybe the 1.3, 1.5 million to fix the lower structure. What we're trying to do is trying, right now, to get some additional spaces. Right now, we're, we're kinda fighting people off to park there. So, doing some of what we're doing is doing some of the ceiling repairs of where you can actually bring cars into and drive on, but the ceiling parts of that area are spaulding, the concrete's falling, so that we can move the fence and go up another couple of levels, so that we can park some cars there. Um, still needing a lot of repair, but being able to open up, you know, roughly 46 spaces to alleviate some of the congestion that's happening there.
Now, the $2 million bond, you have to, uh, you can apply for it, you apply for it. Now, are you pinned down to a spot, or are they gonna give your money safe? Put the parking deck up?
Um, as I spoke to Senator Rodrick, he seemed to feel that, uh, obviously, it says downtown in the legislation. Uh, but again, simply because it's authorized and in a very large bond bill, um, it still has to get issued. So, we would still have to go through an approval process before the funds would become available. Additionally, um, he did seem to feel that if the city decided that it wanted to change the allocation to put maybe more money into a waterfront facility, uh, parking garage, as opposed to dividing it. At the present time, it's $2 million for downtown, $1 million for the waterfront. But he said it would be up to the community to decide if it wanted to take some of the downtown money and shift it down to the waterfront, uh, for parking, which, I mean, we know we clearly have a need on the waterfront as well. So, there's some flexibility in terms of how we might allocate the funds. There is, uh, a possibility that we could use it for repair versus new construction. But we also do need to get approval, um, to have the, the bonds actually issued, so the city can receive the funds.
What kind of timeframe are we, are we talking?
Well, it, it's currently, again, authorized. We'd have to submit to DCAM, um, and that would be all of the itemized, uh, costs for whichever project we decide to pursue. I'm assuming there'll be some review and oversight by them before they would go ahead and approve the construction. So, I mean, it's gonna take some time, Councilor. I think the, um, intermediate or the short-term solution that Mr. Gallagher mentioned was approximately $80,000 that we would fund locally. And that would allow, um, Mrs. Ferrera to get an additional 46 spaces. So, we have a short-term-
It's on Third Street, all right?
-solution, and that would be at Third Street, yes.
All right. Are we, Laura, are you maxed out with parking?
Um, at the Third Street Garage, yes, we are. We have 156 spaces, and every single space is taken. And I have a waiting list. Um, I have a lot of board and east elderly people that really like parking in there, especially in the winter months.
Yeah.
Um, right now, I can't issue anymore for Third Street Garage, so I'm having them go down to Pearl with the hopes that we can fix those two levels and open up those spaces.
Now, what's the idea on, on the flat surface? Do you wanna bring it up one level? The flat surface, right? What do you, is that what you wanna do?
One additional level, Councilor. So, if you have 110 on the ground level, you'd have 110 over that ground level. So, you'd be doubling the spaces.
Just an idea, and I'm gonna kick this out tonight, that, uh, you all know, I, I feel about the police station, and it's gotta be knocked down. That's one block away from the parking deck. And, uh, that particular Beppet Street, you can go right in on the first floor, and if you come down the other way, you come in on the second floor. I think it, it, uh, probably, uh, an idea that, uh, you guys could kick around, because we're certainly not, and you know, we're not gonna sell that police station tomorrow, next year, or 10 years down the road. And I think it's an eyesore, and something should be done. Uh, do you wanna bring sweet skates in? All well and good. You're gonna leave the police station? Who knows? But that's an area too. Like you said, it's downtown. So is that downtown. So, it's just an idea that I'm kicking out there, maybe you can think about it. But sooner or later, that thing's gotta come down. And maybe- And maybe the next council meeting, I'll have a resolution, see if we can knock that down. It's just got to be done. I know there's a little extra money, maybe, maybe we can get it done. But it's been that way for, what, 18 years?
We, we just recently, Council, had applied for a grant from the state to actually do the cleanup work at the police station, feeling that if we were able to do all that remediation, then it might be attractive to an investor to go ahead and develop the property because they wouldn't have that, you know, 800-plus thousand dollar cleanup cost. Unfortunately, we just learned that the project was not funded. So I think I'd be more inclined to agree with you that the day is fast approaching, that the, the structure may, may have to be demolished, because again, to get any kind of a developer interested, the cleanup costs are just extremely high, and, and they don't make the development profitable.
So you're waiting on this council to see if we give the okay to get bids, is that it? Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah, if you would, for the, for the $80,000.
Just for the 80?
To do the, to do those repairs. So once we would get that, we would have advertisement about a month with the central registry and all of that, and about another month with contracts and things of that nature.
You need an engineer for that?
Yeah, it's already, what you have in front of you is.
And you're only talking 80,000?
Just to do that repair on that second and third level, just the, the ceiling decks.
80,000.
Is what he tells me.
What does the engineer cost?
The engineer's already been paid for by myself.
How much?
I think this right here, I think, was $5,000 for him to.
$5,000, that's not too bad. But, you know, I say, I say 80,000, if we can spend 80,000, get 46 spots, that's well worth it, I'd say. But anyway, I said my piece, and we'll see what's going to happen. We'd like to get more parking downtown for sure. How many post office trucks parked there, Laura?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, huh? So here, here you go. You would free up 75 spots by having that on Bedford Street if the police station was turned into a parking, parking deck. Seventy-five is a lot, and it's a dual thing. We can knock it down and put the deck there, and it's not that far from everything. City Hall, everything. Something to think about with that idea.
Thank you, Councilor. Mrs. Ferreira, just one question. How many people do you have on the waiting list?
Right now, we've got about eight people.
Thank you. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Long?
Yeah, I find these conversations really interesting. It's a either-or type of thing. I believe I want it all done. I think we should do it in phases, Phase One, and Phase Two, Phase Three, but it's not a situation where I can sit here and say, oh, I want this rather than that. It just doesn't make any sense to me. We needed all the parking. We need parking at, on the waterfront, but we also, we've needed parking downtown for 20 years. It doesn't make any sense. So where is the planning? Where's the long-term planning? Where, we go back to it again and just say, okay, here we are. Again, we talk about the same things over and over and over again with no plan. Oh, we can do the 80, or we can do 1.2, but then we can take the bonding, we can move it from the waterfront, we can move it up to the downtown. Oh, we could take the downtown and move it to the waterfront. No, I want the waterfront, I want the downtown, I want the repair, I want it all, because we need it. It's absolutely a need, and the thing is, it will pay for itself. Will it not?
No, that's the problem.
But there is funding in there. It's not, it's not going to be totally, how much, how much are we talking about?
So if we were to do both, let's just stick to Third Street and, and the flat lot. If we were to do both, we, we would need approximately $5 million.
Total?
Total. We would get $2 million from this bond.
Correct.
We're not going to free up enough of spaces to earn the money to pay the principal and interest on the bond.
And the bond would be for 2 million?
The bond, the bond from the state would be like a grant, so that 2 million would be money that we would receive.
And you'd bond for three.
And we need to bond for three, and that's the problem.
And how much are we showing on the three when it comes, really gets down to it?
Well, if we looked, well, our analysis that Mrs. Ferreira did was on the flat lot only, because that's what this resolution was. The flat lot would cost us about 2.5 million dollars. That's a repayment on a annual basis of about 150,000. The most we can get in terms of additional revenue in that lot, if every space was taken, is 65,000. So right from the get-go.
At what, at what cost? What's the cost of the parking?
$45 a month.
$45 bucks a month?
Yes.
Is that the, is that the going rate now, 45?
That's what we're charging all of the, the monthly renters. Now, if we have a seven-day renter, we can, if we have a seven-day renter like the high rises, the Borden East and Borden West, we could potentially get a little bit more, but right now, we're getting $45 a month.
So you get $45 a month for each vehicle, and that's what you're charging the post office?
Yes, the post office was actually paying 35 before. When we took over, we had, the administration had decided that they should pay like everyone else. So the contract that we have with them, they pay $45 for each vehicle. We do have probably roughly about 20 people that do pay 50 because they park there from Monday through Sunday.
Now, what happens in, during the daytime when the post office trucks leave? Do you rent those spots during the day?
They're, they're taken throughout the day with, with the individuals that park there and out in the morning, and the, the garage is always full.
And see, that's why, this is where I get a little bit confused on this, because who parks a car there for 24 hours a day, every day? Doesn't make any sense to me. If, if there's a resident that's using it for work, and they go in, they park, they get up, they go to work. When it's, when they're at work, that, you can rent that by the hour.
Right, but the residents that are there are all elderly, so they don't work.
Okay.
So they get up in the morning, they go do their groceries, they come back. All, everyone else is court employees, city employees, DAs. It's all people that park at the garage and go to work. Five o'clock, yes, at 5:00. And throughout the day, right now, I have a parking control officer that's there every morning so that we can see what's going on with open spaces. So before 12:00, I'll have 14 spaces available. After, before 2:00, I'll have eight or nine spaces available. So there are people that leave early, so I'm trying to make sure that there's always spaces available for those people that park there seven days a week, that are going grocery shopping, or that are going out and come back and have a spot.
So from a commercial standpoint, nighttime parking, there's no available nighttime parking? None?
The only people that park in the Third Street Garage nighttime is the residents that live close by that pay for the seven days. You probably have about 20 to 25 cars that are there.
So how many spaces you've got available at night? So if somebody wanted to go down and say, hey, I'm going down there for dinner?
There's plenty of spaces available.
And they can use them?
Yes, we do have a kiosk there.
Yep.
But the way things are going now, I'm focusing more because I don't have spaces. The biggest problem was, jurors are supposed to go to the Pearl Street Garage. So when they were putting the address into their GPS, it was taking them to Third. I had to turn them away, because if I have 20 or 30 jurors that park on Third Street Garage, the people that are monthly parkers, there won't be any spaces.
No, I'm just looking at this, and we can say the number of spaces, okay? It doesn't, the, the economics don't work.
Right.
But we've got to look at the return on investment also. When we have available parking, that also brings other businesses to the downtown area. One of the biggest concerns everybody has when they go downtown is, where am I going to park?
Well, we have plenty of spaces on Pearl Street.
No, I understand, I understand. So I'm just saying.
So we have to outweigh that as well.
The only thing is, Pearl Street's in a very, not the most convenient location, because it's down a hill. People do not want to park their cars and walk up the hill. They just don't. I mean, some people do, but for the moment, they don't. So we need something more convenient. I think that, that flat street, the flat spot that we're talking about, is much more convenient, it's easier to walk and that type of stuff. Pearl Street's a little more difficult, but we really need to address this, and we've got to do it in phases. How do we address, if we're talking about developing downtown, developing the waterfront, we really need to discuss the parking issue and how we're going to address it moving forward. Because without parking, we're kind of dead in the water.
So if it's the will of this council to approach the state and utilize the $2 million that's been set aside for downtown parking to put, erect a garage similar to the primary care structure on the flat surface, we can certainly start to go ahead in that direction.
That would be, that would be my idea. And then I'd approach them more for the downtown, I mean, for the waterfront.
And as long as the bond can be authorized throughout the Commonwealth, then we could have a much less impact on the total authorization of the city debt.
So it seems to be, I just don't like this either-or type of thing. It should be an entire piece within everything, you know? We just spent, I forget how many million dollars on the waterfront, but we still don't really have the parking issue resolved. How people are going to access it, we've got the train coming, how much parking we putting down there for trains? Do we have any of that? Does, we know how much has been set aside? Probably not enough.
Not at all, Councilor.
Right, so it's, it's, it's there, it's all there. The only thing we don't have is parking, so that is going to be a hindrance to further development. So we need to figure that piece out. And in the, in the meantime, we want, we don't want our downtown to die, we need to put more parking in the downtown. So I say we do both of them. Do, do the repair and the, and the construction on the, on the flat surface at the present. But I don't want to get in a situation where we build a building on the CSO project, and then we have a problem, we go to, that's, that doesn't make any sense. So that I yield.
Anything further, Councilors? Councilor in seat one?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my colleagues. I think, number one, we just need to really kind of work with the redevelopment authority. They, they just did their whole downtown urban renewal plan. A lot of that, you know, kind of addressed the need for parking. I think with the new administration coming in, we really need to kind of have a long-term strategic plan in terms of what parking looks like in downtown and, and the waterfront. I think before we really have a, a good grasp of that, I mean, I don't think we should be investing money in a, you know, a three-level parking garage if, if that's not what makes the most sense. Maybe that property is more valuable for development versus anything else. And I understand this 2 million, 2 and a half million dollars set aside, but, you know, the likelihood of that being released by the governor is, is almost slim to none. I mean, you see that on a, on a year-to-year basis with the legislature, where they just, you know, throw in a lot of these wish lists, and it's with good intent to, to try to get this into the bonding, and if the governor releases the money, it releases, but the likelihood of us really getting that 2, 2.5 million dollars is, is really not, in my mind, the reality. So I think we should really kind of take this opportunity with the new administration coming in, try to have them set up either a, a committee, or, you know, which should include some councilors and some other business owners, and, and really kind of, just kind of delve into what the development of downtown really looks like moving forward, what the waterfront looks like, and then really coming up with a strategic plan. Because, and, and the other piece is that maybe the parking doesn't make sense on Third Street. Maybe it needs to be located somewhere else where you're going to have a lot more foot traffic, or, you know, just interaction in, in a different part, because, you know, number one, it's hard to get to Third Street. I think Pearl Street's just the, you know, that one where the location doesn't make sense. That's why we don't have a lot of people going there to, to park there. So before we start investing 2, 2.5 million dollars, I think it's just, we need to make sure that we do the right thing, and it makes the most sense moving forward. I'd love to have that money from the state, but again, I mean, we could sit here and say it's going to come down, but we'll, we might never see it. And I believe that's going to expire, right, at the end of the legislative cycle? It doesn't carry on, right? Is it July, or is it continuing?
I'm not sure, Councilor. It was actually put in there some time ago, so I'm not sure.
I know there's an expiration date on it, I'm just not sure if it's this legislative cycle in July, but with that, I'd really urge, you know, this council and the administration to really kind of talk about the, the long-term parking needs. So with that, I yield.
Anything further from the council? Is it the will of council to table this item in finance?
Motion to table.
Motion to table made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, my Council Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Finance is adjourned. Keep rolling? Yeah? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. It's seven. City Council will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilors Kadim?
Here.
Joseph Camaro?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pavaros?
Here.
Palabri LaBau?
Here. Will everyone in the chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing, first, salute to the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the residents around the area of Northeast Alternatives have expressed many concerns in regards to traffic, noise, and air pollution over the past several months, and whereas the residents are seeking a solution to their concerns, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety, along with the City Administrative, Director of Traffic, Director of Code Enforcement, and a representative from Northeast Alternatives convene to discuss possible solutions.
Council Kilby?
I'll just throw it out there, like I said, I have no, no problems being in my committee, but it does cross into many other, any, many other subcommittees, at least four, so it might be wise, I'll throw it out there once again, just to amend it and have it go to finance, so. And, and actually, I'll also say, two members of my Public Safety Committee are leaving the council.
Okay.
So that's just a.
So is it a motion to amend?
Please.
To finance? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was the what?
So a motion?
That was a motion to amend?
Yeah, to send it to finance, so we have to, motion to adopt as amended?
To adopt as amended.
Made by Council Stephen Camaro, seconded by Council Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted.
Item number two are citations for the EMA Four Winds Fire Volunteers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted.
Item three is a citation for the recipient of the 2019 Roger Valcourt Memorial Outstanding Citizen of the Year.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted.
Ordered that permission be, and the same is hereby granted to Anton David Vargas, 157 Rice Avenue, Somerset, DBA ADV Auto Repair for license to operate an auto repair shop at 681 Breton Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Long, seconded by Pelletier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted.
Item number five is the order revoking storage permits for Duro Industries and Rahul Bilidaria Trustee. If we could just update the order to remove the owner of 1708 South Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Is that a motion to amend, Madam Clerk?
Move to delete.
Motion to delete, made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
By Council Kadim, seconded by Council Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is the order granting permission to Mass Electric in Verizon, New England, for the pole location at Jefferson Street Extension.
Move to adopt the order.
Motion to adopt by Council Stephen Camaro?
Second.
Seconded by Council Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Council Kadim?
Discussion. Just with regards to this relocation, has DBW or the city engineer gone out to make sure that the pole is, where it's being located is okay in terms of ADA compliance or safety issues?
Um, no, there is no sign-off from, we're not required to notify their department until the council acts on the order. We, we get preapproval from the engineer if it's an underground conduit, but for pole locations, we do not.
So what, is that just a policy, or is that, is that drafted in city ordinance on that procedure?
That is our.
Just internally?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Can we just, I guess in the future, just refer to DBW and engineering, just so we can get their opinion and make sure that it's okay? Because a lot of times, what happens is that they end up putting these poles in the middle of sidewalks, and then you have ADA issues or safety issues and line-of-sight issues. So, I just wanna make sure that before we approve any of these poles, 'cause trying to get National Grid or any one of those companies to come out and actually remove any of the poles is a challenge in itself, so. Alright, I yield.
You yield, Councilor? We had a motion to adopt.
Second.
We already had the, correct, Madam Clerk, you had the
Yes.
In the second. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have the police chief's report?
Move to adopt the police chief's report?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Councilor Kadim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number eight are applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Move adoption of renewals.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Councilor Kadim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
And item number nine are applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses.
Move adoption and renewals.
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item number 10 is a request for the revocation of an auto repair shop license at the request of the license holder. This is at 672, excuse me, 686 Breton Avenue.
Move to accept and adopt the request.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Stephen Camaro. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 11 is the order canceling the City Council and Finance Committee meeting for November 26.
Motion to adopt, made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by
Second.
Councilor Kadim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to cooperation council.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Long. All in favor?
Aye.